We're going to go ahead and get started. If I can get a motion from our executive session.
I'm going to move we model decade setting.
Second. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor of say aye. I'll give the recall. John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion back to five zero. Okey dokey. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. We had an executive session that was a little long. We have all five councilors present and several of our staff here this evening. Thank you for joining the public too. Our first order of business is to approve the minutes from our last meeting. On August twenty. Sorry.
Madam Chair, I move we start. I move except we found out from meeting minutes on August twenty second, twenty twenty three. Seconds.
We have a motion in a second. I mean, if that's in. All those in favor of say aye. John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Jeff? Aye. Melissa?
Aye.
Mary with aye. Motion back to five zero. Right. Next order of business is the treasurer warrants. Losing all my confidence. Before we make a motion on this, Jen, are we officially closed out or? Yes, this way.
Yes, we are.
Cool. Alright, so we have a treasurer warrant dated September twenty three. I want to make a motion to sign a treasurer warrant dated September twenty three in the amount of. Large one, one thousand. Sorry, no. One million, six hundred fifty eight thousand, eight hundred nine dollars and ninety four cents.
Second.
Thank you. Your motion in seconds for discussion does include our monthly payments to the local.
So it's a large.
It also has the road funds and police funds paid as a part.
That's a we an extra big one. Thank you.
Madam Chair, you might, you said nine, six, twenty three. Looks like nine, seven, twenty one. I didn't know if you wanted to imagine.
Oh, no, it's not the actual warrant. Oh, I'm sorry. We're good. Thank you. Okay, any other discussion on the warrant? All those in favor of signing the treasurer warrant, say aye. John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Jeff? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion back to five zero. Great. Next order of business, we report them to the H M. Up first is downtown revitalization RFP. It sounds like we got a couple back.
Madam Chair, so we put that out. We received two presentation, uh, through RFP. One from. Right here, some amount of twenty nine thousand, nine seventy. And one from I O D Community Planning Consulting, forty thousand, eight oh five fifteen. The goal is to set up a committee to interview those two companies. And awarded. So tonight I'm working for, we'd like to do it next week sometime. Two councils who like to participate will be, it'll be a short process. And then we hope to bring the final candidate for the council on the twenty fifth for presentation.
Okay, so it looks like for this, we need to identify two of us to join for eighteen and nineteen. I don't know, John, you were right there.
Yes, ma'am.
Does that work with your schedule? Is there any?
I'll make, I'll make it work.
Cool. Anyone else interested?
I'd like to be considered this.
Your time. Okay, well, we got two.
Twenty and Tuesday. Do we have, we have Tuesday?
We have pencil. Here, pencil and two o'clock on Tuesday afternoon. You want to sign this mark?
We'll walk Tuesday afternoon. We'll walk Tuesday afternoon. Okay, we're all of us.
Send the invitation to you first.
We, we do have a, we have four teams set up and we are asking someone from the public to join us. So that will have that hopefully will be a fairly. A fairly endless process.
Will they be coming? Will the two firms be coming to us or will they be two?
Just one. The one that's made that's to restore, that only one for, for dying to come in and get it done. So.
Join over the interview though. Are you only in everyone?
No, both interviews will come, will be on next Tuesday.
Yeah.
And then that committee will pick, will store and pick one, one of them we recommend. On twenty sixth, you to approve. We'll come and do a presentation to you ahead of time before you approve and receive.
My question was next Tuesday. Are the two come, the two groups coming to town hall for those interviews or are they going to be on Zoom?
That I don't think.
You guys set that up, but like this.
Here it's to me. Okay, so we have John and Melissa. I don't think we need a motion for this one.
No, we don't need a motion.
Okay, cool. Thank you, John and Melissa, for being willing to do that. And then next we have an informational only of the, the traffic study regarding, I mean, F D O T foods. Denise, who wants to begin with?
All that and I'll turn it over to Denise. As I kind of reformally form the council. All that and I'll turn it over to Denise. As I've kind of reformally informed the council, we've gotten a great deal of support from the D O T staff. And the engineering staff, including Dale Dowd and Steve Foles, we hold all four representatives, they did, Dale Dowd is the head of the engineering piece up there. So Denise and Jen met with them on several meetings. The state is willing to back us and get involved. And help us get some additional funding in the tune of up to five hundred thousand by grants to get us to kind of skip the design. The conceptual design phase because the project was done so well through Beta Technics. And get us to go directly to the, stop the design build, which could essentially be the high cost would be up around a hundred, five hundred thousand. And it'd be a twenty percent match with we have in the, we have in the chip project money for a hundred thousand. So Denise, you want to elaborate a little bit more on that?
Essentially, when we met with the C A C, they sort of, they sort of said the main D O T has given the town a couple of reasonable terms that they're going to be supporting, that they're supporting. But that they can get the capability of advancing the F Y twenty twenty six funding cycle and will look at F Y twenty twenty four, which gives us an advance on the project. And a lot of the D O Ts that then revolve around shooting, whether this cattle or bridge project or not. And I think if we made it for that, that would put us at a deficit, you know, per, per the project. So I think Tim has spent a plan on handing both the draft application that I have submitted. I'm going to be presenting at the September twentieth C A C meeting next week. And after that, they will decide if they're going to approve the funding cycle or if they wait for voting on the twentieth on the, at the October meeting. So either way, we will know by the end of October whether we're in this hill or the F Y twenty four. Quarter. So pretty excited about it. The project costs can range anywhere from three hundred fifty thousand to five hundred. Whatever it is, we are responsible for twenty percent of that. Which we have more than enough on the transit or district as well as the company district. So pretty excited about it and see what happens and hopefully post.
I just have a question on the but you know, you talked about five hundred dollars and we got two to twenty percent of that. That's for the design.
This design and construction document is giving you a very close to accurate, of course, we don't know about this, very accurate construction and thought. And then all of you folks will get to decide whether it's someone on a particular, whatever cost. Keep in mind that once that gets approved, there's obviously grant monies that are available to fund destruction as well.
Okay.
And so that's another base. So the really neat thing is I can be able to potentially, once it's done in six or nine months, you're able to go out to bed and figure out, you know, what we need to do to move forward for the project. And then this again is a draft format, you know, so they, they're going to review this at their meeting next week and determine what parts they will be able to accomplish, not what they want to.
So I handed out to you a copy of an updated email that I got from Denise or from Sky Media, it was all the draft application that project identification for an M P O project for the state. And I can tell you that I filled out several of these before with grants and I've done another project. This, this is the style of how you get the full state federal funding. My spot about this is where the state is talking about this. The state is talking also about being the lead on this project. So they'll do all the R F Ps. They'll do all the bidding. They'll do all the, all the stuff. We basically have to sit back and approve the the draft document. Where this is very news brought. Again, the one thing Dale Dowd reiterated to me is in the past, we've always had a tough time working with self work and we're excited to work with them. Excited to get funding, excited that the council is looking at this. But if we don't do this, probably we shouldn't have to stay for anything in the future.
So I think this is, thank you both for updating us on this. I think this is a good reminder, I guess, for the public that next Tuesday, this, next Tuesday evening at six P M, we're having a public hearing where we're looking here for the public on the traffic issue and reviewing after, hoping that people will have a chance to review the proposals from tomato techniques. I will also be giving a presentation beginning to kind of round everybody, but this is potentially a very exciting, I think, time for self work where all of this funding, all of these, this information that Denise and Tim have shared this evening hinge upon us voting in before moving forward with this. And so that is not something that has happened yet, but a thing that would come before the town council in the future after this public hearing. Very exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, does anyone have questions on this one?
Okay. Madam Chair, yeah. So if we choose not to move forward with this, where main D O T would be the project manager, would we potentially lose this funding that they're offering if they're not the project manager?
They need to be the project manager because funding, you know, so the U N T slash C A C security area, they don't have some transportation system. Anyway, yeah, yeah. And so it's not losing it. It's just we have to work in concert with them. And main D O T will run the project, but it's not to say that you're not needing more, right? So they're going to be the project lead, but there will be a team of city staff, of city council, one of that, that tells that and down the house is trying to be involved and that's fine as well. There'll be a team that is small. Who is it? Who is not yet?
And the reason I asked is there's certainly an infrastructure rush going on in our state and surrounding towns and just in our country in general. And I'm concerned if the view, the main D O T takes the lead on this project, that how much of a priority are we going to be with everything else going on? It's almost like I'm a little hesitant to subcontract them as the head of it, that we might lose priority and timeliness of, of the nature of the, of the job.
So it doesn't work that. So what happens is they only do so many projects each year and they only do based on the amount of staff that they can use for the project. So when I say they need the lead on the project, it's a team approach. It's us and I've, and I've done progress with them before in the past doing this. So they, they basically do all, their staff and the rest of the, of all the R F Ps, all, all the hired workforce. We who, we get to sit in and all the decision making and say yes, no, they sign the checks. That's really what it amounts to. It's a good deal for us because it, it helps they, we don't have the staff. We would, we would be kind of spending thousands and thousands of dollars hiring engineers, try to craft this project. So normally what would happen is, you know, and I did this in a couple of towns. I was like, when we did this, once they, you know, it's the R F P, everything that approved by the council, that approved by the staff that was involved. We developed it, it was a staff leadership team. And I was involved with council, staff, myself, public work director, the town manager, among people. And we would meet every two weeks and every two weeks they'd go over the bills, go over the plans, where they worked, the updates and the change orders. So we had our hands all in. It was all there. And it wasn't, it wasn't that they were going to take over. We're going to be sitting back doing anything because it's not, they're the lead, but it's in a conjunction team because it's our town. So it's how we do it. They won't take the project on. If they take the project on, so they'll only take like, maybe say six or eight projects. So that, because that's all they have for engineering staff and do that, blah, blah, blah. So that's why it's important. We're talking about the twenty six, twenty five, twenty four budget queues and getting in there, the sooner we get in there, the sooner we get to find a project. The state gives the project to give us the staff to build it. So that, the whole deal behind it is it's really a good deal for us. We wouldn't, to do it the other way would be so fast and effective. It, it wouldn't be worth it for us to do it. It would cost taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars more. So. But it, there is, it's a very good process. It's not, I know when we talk conversation and all this stuff, we've had some issues. But with these projects and these kinds of M P O projects, I mean, a full project, it works good. I, I've been involved in three of them and, and it, it's actually much more detailed than we do because you're going to go by state federal stuff and all the stuff and across it. And there's hundreds of factors they do. And so it'll be funny to you to read.
Yeah.
If that happens, you question, Denise, anything to add on that?
It's really just part of the process and you know, if he puts our plan together, every year the, the budget updated and so we're basically in their view. So that would change. So we'll be the formal approval so that we can say who's going to be giving it, who's going to give it. So that will keep it more, uh, certain meeting and like I said, we're going to understand where they're approved and approvals we're going to do.
So a perfect example, if I may, so like A Cut Out Awards for Termic Consulting, the state I M as the lead engineer, they, so the consulting, uh, termic consulting just did it in New Hampshire for the ninety one two thirty six project. So they're meeting every two weeks. They're not, they're not, they're not, uh, just a state project at the time, any food on it. So every two weeks they have staff meetings, they take out the minutes, the minutes go out, that's what they're doing. The crashing of the funding, project work, any change work orders, all that stuff is being done. And that's the same thing stated where they would hire an engineering firm, us and down, we'd get together, rehire an engineering firm to run the project. And then they put a project lead in and then, so you don't have to, we don't have to, they do it to their cost and that's part of the grant process. And then we just get reports every two weeks and have that. We didn't, we'd have the engineer coming, probably have your council meeting, we want things and I would say.
And just a final statement, where this is really coming from is that with what's going on at the intersection of two thirty six and ninety one, there was a lot of constituents and just drivers in general that were concerned, a lot of complaints with how the process was going. And where that project was also taken over by the D O T. And when they would ask us what's going on, why are they doing this? Why aren't people directing traffic properly? It's, it's a, it's a, somebody's going to get killed in the construction process as opposed to what it used to be. So like, and then we couldn't, we didn't really have the answers for them because it was a D O T project. So my concern is trying to, and I totally get the fiscal responsibility of going, going this route.
Well, let me, I can answer that. So that's a, that is a full D O T project. There's nothing to do with us, nothing. We didn't offer any, any to that. We didn't, we didn't do anything. That's a D O T project. Except that it's in our town. They told us they were due to, that's for bad. This is something completely different.
Okay.
This is a completely different, whole different thing.
I just want to give, be able to offer an answer to a question of a constituent instead of saying you have to contact the D O T. You know what I'm saying? Which was, which is what we have to do with the intersection.
Two different projects, two different things. It would be, this would be, the town, the town has time to actually funding this. We have direct control of this and that. We have no say in it.
Okay.
I do think it's important though, I mean, the ninety one two thirty six intersection has been rough for a while. We'll be with the construction. And I would imagine we go down this path, the same is going to be true. So everyone, if, you know, we get to that point, I think everyone needs to offer everyone in the community. So great because it's going to be a mess for a while. The more is the worse, the better. Uh, speaking of which, the traffic late to ninety one to thirty six, we have a, you guys have to know when it'll be done.
Okay, yeah, fair update. Microphone. Last up, A I A was they had to redo with the strain holes for the lights. That was the, they ran into lead. So that was the holdup. And then they couldn't get some granite pieces for the full load front lane. It must be the I O D. And I noticed yesterday they completed them for, you know, that's completed. The strain balls, I see there is a big row of two, two hundred and fifty. I think they, they had to rack in that. So say it well on the way.
We're getting, getting done enough. Cool. Awesome. Thank you, Jay. Um, real quick, any, anything else on the traffic study project? Um, I, I was glad that I didn't realize this sooner. I was going to make a motion to move up new business number five and, and address that now. Um, and that opposed to that. Let's make a motion to move new business number five up, um, so that we can let Jay go home. So I made the motion.
Second.
The motion in a second. All those in favor of say aye, John?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
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 Mallory with aye. Motion back to five zero. So we're jumbling things around a little bit. We're going to go ahead and jump to new business number five. Jay can help me. Uh, we just have to, and then Jay, it's for the last page. Yeah. Very, very lucky. Very lucky. Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so, um.
The Oxon Rec Truck, which is a two thousand five F two fifty full blown full truck cab, I didn't notice. Jake came to me a couple of weeks ago and said that the cab had, had fell off or was falling off. And that they're originally looking to, do they put some money back a couple of years ago in the motor? They're looking to try to figure out to get repairs done to it. Get a cab, do some stuff in the frame, replace the front end. I, I said, Jay, it's not worth it, Jay. I said, we're putting bad, good money in the bad sock. And you know, Jay explained that they haven't, we're just too far behind on equipment and they, that's, he didn't ask for it last year because this year because he had to ask for through the dump trucks. So again, ask for that. Um, so over the past couple of weeks, Jay's been using his truck and with the trailer, pack the molds around when he could. And the ox person is even driving lawnmowers up and down the street to get the job. There's no way for us to be operating equipment. Um, so in capital, the C I P account for highway, this fifty eight thousand dollars was slated for payment on the first payment of the new pile trucks, but the chassis is getting, getting ended up. So the construction, the chassis is going to be pushed back almost a year. We don't have to make that first payment until it comes in. So we're up to fifty eight thousand. And I'm recommending that we, the, the the town, you allow us to use some of that money this year to replace this truck because without it, we can't do boxing right. Can't move the lawns, can't move the mowers. And the problem is, so Jay said, look at two weeks ago, every time we find a good deal, it's, we found one yesterday, today. We found it twenty twenty F three fifty with what fourteen or seventeen thousand miles. And for a thirty seven or thirty six thousand, thirty seven, thirty eight, thirty eight thousand. By the time Jay called him back and it's gone. So I need you to approve an amount of money that we can just go shopping with and, and every, you know, Jay, how many trucks have you looked at in the last two weeks?
We've looked at seven trucks and three of them are sold. For the passengers to the town, I think the best bank for a month. A new one, just fifty two on the low end and sixty on the high end. An XL employee.
So we figured we could get this, get a used one and if we can find a good new one, the way they take care of vehicles, they'll keep it for ten fifty one year. But we don't have anything right now. They're using the five thousand suburban to come time to transform the trailer. And Jay's got to use his truck or something. So thought of, thought of the answer.
Madam Chair, I moved that we reallocated the forty thousand dollars in the highway C I P account and use for replacement parking recreation drop. They can get the grass company to do the beautiful job.
We have a motion in a second. Any?
I have to agree with Jay. Well, he's not going to say this, but I think the price allocation is actually too low. Work trucks, as Jay said, they range anywhere from fifty to sixty thousand dollars and these days used are just as expensive as old. So why would we inherit somebody else's problems with a used vehicle? And it's actually can be cheaper. They, sometimes they offer better deals when you're purchasing new as opposed to old. And unfortunately, with the work that this truck would be doing, it needs to be a work truck. So a two fifty, a twenty five hundred or whatever because of towing and hauling capacity. And it is what it is. And unfortunately, I just think the forty thousand is just, that we're not going to get a good truck that's going to last for that amount of money.
We're struggling to find, I mean, I put the body in, but it's whatever you want to prove. I, I tend to agree. We did get a deal. We, we had a, a new one for, I think we got a two fifty. They were talking about fifty thousand to one of the dealers.
Deal that we bought five fifty from in some year, email that we can get a fifty two thousand and change.
Right. That's, that's the limit. They'll drive it up there and put it on back. Yeah. Is that fifty eight? The remaining amount that we use at home is going to stay in the capital reserve and go to the, the additional payment next year. I put forty thousand down on the council gun shoot. I didn't know what the time. I put forty thousand down on the council gun sheet, so I didn't know what time we would find, I was just looking to get a truck, so. I can tell you, we've been, like you say, we found seven of them, we're, we're already sold, anything that's less than four miles. Goes off the doors faster than you can pick the phone up and call, so I, I, whatever you want to do, we need some kind of replacement.
Yeah. Anyone else have thoughts on, um, I mean, if we were to increase the amount and then, you know, we kind of trust you guys to figure out what's going to work best?
Thing I'm doing most is a mall, right, even the mall, that we did, it's an aluminum cab and bodies, so. So I'm mostly concerned with them, you know, like, sure, we're office and cameras. So that's why I'm holding that group, just trying to say, like, how it sold off, how it pulled more miles. So I'm just trying to say some of our C I P, just in case something else happens.
Right.
That are bought, emptying the box.
Yeah.
But this, this will be a backup pile truck for the pack of logs this winter. We already have a pile, but uh Jay can put the pile on his truck, but we definitely need a. I need a truck for the time.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Uh, I expected this, uh, I'm comfortable with the board at this point, so. Uh, we need to take it over, it is moving down, it was given a second.
I know, we're just kind of having a front of our heart.
Yep, this was a work, right.
Um.
All right, can I amend my motion?
Real quick, Jay, it sounds like, um, you know, you're concerned, okay, if we spend more. Then we're completing some funds or kind of like, if something else happens or we need to do something else. So are, from your perspective, Ryan, from the public works department, is, are, are you more comfortable with the dollar number? Just kind of given that the cushion that gives you for other things? Or would you?
I'm, I'm comfortable with what I've looked, mechanic and I have, we looked at three trucks for sure, hands on. You know, they were great from the thirty eight to thirty six, but they were a little higher than I was, you know, when I found yesterday. Thirty eight thousand, you know, fourteen thousand miles, so I thought this was a very good deal to call. So it is, it's, so they all slot, possible.
So, and what did you find out about the potential strike, or did you tell me today?
The potential strike of Ford Company, we got, we got Ford and the GM also is on strike, so you want, that's. It means like, oh, we came in, the dealers put on their own price. So that's another fear of mine that they're going to be untouchable.
How about the features reverses around Jay, just to put out, if, if we went with fifty eight. And we asked you to use your genuine religion, you get the best deal you can get, it gives you the opportunity to either buy new or could not find a used one. Or find a good deal on a used one. It, it gives you the point, it puts it in your guys' court. I know you're always looking to save the town money, I've seen it over nine years, you're always looking for the best deal for the town. I'm comfortable in voting that down, redoing the motion at fifty eight. And letting you use your best judgment, you and Tim, and getting the best deal for the town. I think that's a win win for everybody. I agree and I appreciate that.
Um, I was prepared how this goes, so we want to go ahead and we'll take a vote and put it down. For, for our favor of that, we'll take a vote. Um, all those in favor of the motion that's on the table for forty thousand dollars. Uh, say aye, John.
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
So, aye.
Nay.
Nay, motion passes, sorry. Motion does not pass one for, spare that. Um, okay, so then we'll take any motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we allocate fifty eight thousand dollars from the highway C I P account. Use for replacement parking recreation truck, using discretion of the public department director. And the town managers, do the best they can to get that.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion on this one? All those in favor say aye, John?
Yes, aye.
Aye.
Dustin, aye, Linda, aye, aye, motion passes five zero. Go shopping for a truck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, um, getting a second order, so our next order is to be public comments. Anyone in the room that wants to speak out anything that's on the agenda, go ahead, if you'll just come up to the podium and state your name and address. And just so everyone's aware, for a public comment, we're, um, you're going to give everyone three minutes.
Okay. Um. This is, it's actually a letter, I'm going to read it out loud. Uh, each of us has the ability to make choices, whether we act upon this opportunity or not, inaction still action. And subsequently remains inherently a choice. Please remember, all members of this council have chosen to reappoint at least one member of the building committee. In doing so, was the council reaffirming its choice to reappoint any one member? I would say yes. Did you do this knowing our committee and abilities to do the work? Did you do this out of convenience? Did you even contemplate replacing one of us? Consider these rhetorical questions, because any response is actually immaterial. As there's only one relevant response, you chose to reappoint us. When this council, our governing body chooses to reappoint members to a committee. You make a tacit agreement to those individuals, their committee as a whole, and to the community that. You trust and to our community that you trust them to do the representative work. It is one of your responsibilities as a council to ensure each appointed committee. In our governance, retains a membership to function responsibly. You have continually done so over the years for the building committee. The question then begs, when you choose to reappoint members of the building committee. Did you, did you do so to ensure the committee's charge to assist the council in all town owned building projects? I believe this is true, as I'm unable to discern any other reason for you to appoint us. Just as you appoint and reappoint members to the planning board, historic commission, conservation commission. And other committees in town, you are entrusting that their expertise and professionalism will enable these committees. To engage their work and then report to you. You are not one of these committees, and nor are you the building committee. These choices to reappoint, point and reappoint members to committees by the council. Which by doing so, ensuring their function, is a responsibility citizens trust upon each member of this council. This process continues undebated, even while council membership changes over the years. This is how the volunteer portion of our governmental structures endures through different administrations. Because you serve at the pleasure of us, the citizenry, as confirmed by the ballot box every November. You made a choice, however conceived, to inject and remove the building committee from an already fast moving. Process on the town hall, as noted in my August fifteen letter to you.
I'll leave that.
Thank you. This choice by you can further undermine the trust of appointed members in other committees. They also are volunteers, committing their time, energy and skills for their appointed work. And as such, they each require respect. The council earns respect for their choices. These choices include civility, openness, honesty, accountability, transparency, and yes, the list is very long. When these choices are lacking, then one questions the trust, confidence and ability of the work. Unfortunately for me, your chosen actions make trust and other qualities suspect. Maybe this will again, maybe this will change, and then again, it's your choice. And my one question to you is, why did you not involve the building committee at the beginning of this project? Thank you.
All right, any other public comments? All right, Lauren, anyone on the phone? Uh, all right, we will go ahead and move on to unfinished business. Number one, um, accepting the Port City final report on town hall. Uh, so we have very large cap hit this evening for our sporting assets largely because of the Port City report, which is. Uh, I'm named the last. Um, so this is the final report that we received from Port City. Um, after kind of deliberating with them as far as what we wanted them to include in the report. And this is more than anything of formality for the town council who officially um adopted and accepted this as an official town document.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the Port City file report as you provided to the council.
Thank you, motion in a second, any discussion?
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yeah.
If we accept this final report from Port City, is our partnership with them complete? Are we not allowed to ask them for more information or for, to provide any documents further?
Yeah, the, the RFP is concluded, we're done. So if you do anything different, that one, you create another RFP, going out, give more community somewhere, someplace. But they, they go up, included the contract, they will hold on.
Who's closer? Any other discussion?
I just wanted to point out, it's a little longer than expected to get just that over the board from them. Um, thank you to the main for helping me go and do revisions, vacations over the summer months, so.
Awesome, thank you. Any other comments? All right, um, we have a motion in a second, we'll go ahead and vote, John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Dustin?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero. All right, next order of business, uh, number one, asking the county board to.
Madam Chair, we move to table this, so we can have a little more time to digest from the interview we had to the next town hall meeting.
Second.
Thank you, uh, we have a motion and a second, um, all those in favor say aye, John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Dustin, aye, Melissa, aye, aye, motion passes five zero. Uh. So, that's easy, just, I won't spell it, you know, we're going to have this on our next agenda to actually take action on it. All right, uh, up next, number, new business number two, public hearing date for the general assistance ordinance. And this is uh an annual thing, correct? That is correct, and the verbiage is most of the same. So I'll just, I'm just going to read what you guys have provided in the story back to everyone about it. Um, so the state's published the updated appendices A for H and G I housing max, maximums for recovery residences for general assistance. This is the outkeeping item, we are required by state law to adopt the ordinance of the appendices each year. Um, and in order to do that, we have to set up a public hearing, um, which. Uh, we need to set up a public hearing, uh, for the adoption of these new ordinances and appendices. And appendices which be effective on October first. Uh, you recommended that we schedule that hearing for September twenty sixth, twenty twenty three, ahead of our standing, standard counting. Is that anything? And, uh, so I'll go ahead and make a motion um to set a date for the general assistance ordinance. And appendices update, um, hold that public hearing on Tuesday, September twenty sixth, two thousand and three, at six thirty P M. Here at town.
Second.
Motion in a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye, John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Justin, aye, Melissa?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero. Great, and our next order of business is setting a public hearing date for the lot merger policy. Uh. The, this is the, this is the ordinance used to merge Highland, I think, correct? Yeah.
Right, this is, this is from the assessor, so she found that there was some language in our current ordinance that makes it. Potentially a violation of our court case, so this is just update that ordinance.
Okay.
That's all it is. The Highland I two not, not here yet.
Okay.
Uh, but this is something, this is just about a regular lot merger. And uh, if you look on page, if you look at the merger policy on where it starts on page one. Or page one forty two, or showing the actual. What it was, was, all language of any owner of two or more contiguous preexisting approved or subject to the law is possible. Who wishes to merge them for planning for municipal regulation and taxation purposes. So the court case references that, that he has, Burner's letter stated, the court case references that. State courts found that potentially illegal, because it's not fair to the rest of our taxpayers. So we, and that's what all of these say around the state. So their MMA is recommending we take for municipal regulations with taxation purposes out. Uh, and replace that with the planning purposes. And then the other part is, instead of going to the board of assessors, go to the planning board for authorization, because it's part of planning, that's where we live. So, um, that's really the big, we're going to have to merge them.
The only thing you can, I would like to add is, if you own two lots next door to each other, you can't just. Right now, you can just burn them to state on tax dollars, because now it's one big lot and two little little lots separate. So it puts it in the planning board's hands, where if you own two lots and you want to build a bigger building. That would be unquote the lots, now you merge it to have a one lot and one building, so that you can fit your setbacks in there. Um, so it would only be done for planning purposes, not for state on a package.
Okay.
Because the court, the state law rules, that's not there, that other people can't merge, other than that one, right, Mary.
Okay.
That's, if court cases, if that's going to, with Burner attached it.
Thank you. Uh, so I think you can go ahead and schedule the public hearing date, but I'm wondering if for that evening that we scheduled for. If it's possible for Burner to join us, um, for whomever that's suited.
Jay Burner.
Burner, okay. Um, all right, so for this one, I think I'll suggest that we schedule a public hearing, um, for the, the same date. I think that the G I and public hearing will be pretty quick, that's a pretty standard, um. Look at that, definitely an annual thing that we do, so if we schedule the public hearing for the lot merger policy, I'll make a motion to schedule that for. Also September twenty sixth, um, Tuesday, September twenty sixth, two thousand and three, two thousand and twenty three. Um, at six thirty five P M, uh, here at town.
Well, second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, uh, say aye, John?
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye, Melissa?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero. And last, or new business, ordinance changes for L E two thousand and three. So I know that the um, planning board has been hard at work on um, the necessary changes. Um, to our ordinance for L E two thousand and three, um, speaking for myself. I know that the impact of L E two thousand and three to our community is big. Uh, and I think that this is one that would warrant workshops with the planning board. Um, so that we can make sure we all fully understand the rest of the kind of things.
I'm sure. So, Madam Chair, uh, this is why I shared, ask if I could have, uh. Somebody in the business P D C here tonight, I had reached out to, so Lee Jay Felden, our co enforcement officer, the two who crafted this. They worked together on this, actually it was, Lee Jay would believe, um. And then when we split it in, we asked the Hannah, who's our contract planner, uh, but they both work. On Tuesday nights, they go down to town, in the county, they can attend, I don't harm the Livingston and Buxton or one of those anyways, they're up there. They did say Wednesday's are better, that's why they gave us Wednesday, so I would encourage the council, if you want to workshop, do it on a Wednesday and I can get Lee Jay here. Um, certainly, I would have, Lee Jay would do the, do this.
Okay, great. Um, I think, I, I was looking earlier this evening, at kind of our schedule for the next few weeks. We've got public hearing next week, then our standing council meeting, then our town hall workshop, and then a council meeting. So I think the first week where we would be open would be October, the weekend of October sixteen or sixteen. Uh. So let me, the planning board is first and third Wednesdays. I feel like we shouldn't do this. On the same day as the planning board meeting.
We wouldn't want to, in case planning wouldn't want to attend, right, then my, my, the chair might want to come.
So then October eighteen wouldn't work because that's when I know if any work is cheap, but we could do. We can stack up one of our weeks now Tuesday night and Wednesday night. We, we would have the council, what have you been in the road? Would that work for?
It does. Twenty-fifth and all, I'm good. Then I think of the ninth, the eleventh, I'm a lot more.
What about the fifteenth?
Uh, I could do any of those yet.
Okay, so let's then say, let's, let's aim for October twenty-fifth, Wednesday. Um. For a workshop with planning board to discuss L D two thousand three, and then Tim and you guys can work with Lee J. and. If that date doesn't work, we'd be flexible and, and, uh. Move it around.
That should be far enough ahead.
Okay. Okay, so, um, we don't need a motion for that. So we'll say. October twenty-fifth, six thirty P M for L D two thousand three. That work everybody? We have a lot of homework to do now. Alright, cool. And I just wanna thank, uh, Lee J., Jenny, the planning board, and a lot of our partners. Then there's probably some more homework to go. Alright, um, any other questions or anything else to do on three comments?
I just, I can't let this one by. I. Um, just putting it to October is fine. I understand all that. I, I don't know. If, if, if I'm free to be able to talk with Lee J. or is that out of, out of order? But this, um, what was presented to us tonight, I was highly dissatisfied with. I don't think that it's getting us close to meeting what we're required to do by the end of the year. So that's where my concern was, uh, about having Lee J. here to be able to talk about. Everything involved. Cause we keep talking about two thousand three, but it's not two thousand three anymore. It's an actual law. And that had been. Amended and adapted, and I don't see any of the amendments. Included in that kind of concern. So I just wanna make sure that we're not doing all this work for us to the end of the year. Only that has nine complaints. That's where my concern.
I, I don't have a problem, but if the council without the vote will allow you to follow Lee J. directly.
Yeah.
And I, I don't have a problem with that. If that helps move the wheel forward faster, but. Lee J. is the expert and certainly, you know, that's, that's a council's choice, not my choice. You guys wanna vote go off him to. To reach out to council, so, so the, to, to them, I certainly, I don't have an issue. If you guys get to following the issue sooner, you have a discussion to discuss. So, so why? My only problem with that is we have a board that we assigned to do this and we haven't taken yet. But this came from the planning board and Lee J., right? Correct. So. Go with that disrespect and stepping up with their toes. This is what we have them doing. I don't wanna make it. Look like we're not valuing their work. Or what they do is wrong. We have to be very careful in stepping out directly from the council. Into planning board business. That's just my personal.
Me here that our staff has touched me, correct, with charity planning board. Um. You guys agree with John, like, ultimately the planning board is charged with this task, um, and they are all blamed accountable for it.
Can we?
Do that.
You guys be proud. Yeah, and I agree a hundred percent of you guys. I, don't get me wrong. I was making that suggestion because I don't wanna hold it up with all my questioning points. If it could be done offline. So I agree with you guys.
Yeah, I offer a suggestion.
Yeah.
Can you drop some of your questions and stuff, send it directly to me, then I will pass them on to Lee J. and just simply say that. We were some of your concerns. I was hopeful that, I was okay with that. Cause then that would also say, superstition changed in. And I get the documents still on working mode. I can, it would obviously, we'd have to make the changes and go back to the planning. So that's, you know, the process that you're gonna do. We make changes in this document, you'll have to vote this document down and do that. And if, if you think they've said something. When we ended with Lee J. on this, Lee J. told us that this was probably one of the best. There was only two in Yorktown, I was thinking, that had it done. And he said this was by far the best one to. He's already.
Yeah, and, and that's the thing. If, if it's just a Jeff, no, it's all covered on here that I'm, uh, maybe I missed. That's why I can't, I can't sit here and be like, yeah, I'm, I'm pretty real with it, but I have a question that I, I really didn't get.
So I think the workshop is intended to be an opportunity for us to ask questions. That said though. If you feel like you have so many questions that like that meeting, that workshop might not be as productive as like. We need it to be or like some things that you need coming into that, I think what's been suggested of like coming up with those questions and stuff and trying to. Kind of get ahead of them as much as we can before we launch a workshop. I think that that would be a good suggestion.
I just don't wanna blow up the workshop. That, you know, I wanna be productive.
So if you, if you wanna do that, if the council will be okay with that. I would have Jeff draft the question, send it to me, and I will pass them on to Lee J. and say, has this been included in the document? If not, where do we, where would we go with it? And maybe say, is it worth buying? It's up to you.
I have no idea what you're going to, the council, no problem.
Yeah.
As, as normal, I, I, I don't, I don't want anything going to Lee J. that we don't see because then I don't wanna redo. Jeff's questions again. So if we all see it, we're all good. That's, that's.
And the rest of the planning one is probably be included in that statement. So. Um, we don't need a motion for this.
No, no, it's just, it's not a rating of things.
Yeah.
But before, yeah, let me just get to Lee J. first before I do the planning. Cause they've already done the stocks, they've done their piece.
Okay.
So let me just get to Lee J. and find out if you include it in there at the start. And then you'll get, uh, when you get back to Lee J., I'll pass it all back to you. And then, you know, before the workshop, you'll have the information that. Either it's considering that I was, you were in that same meeting with Lee J., correct?
Yes. Yes, I feel pretty confident with it.
You felt confident and recovered everything. Cause that was just last month. We, we had that. That was long. We had that final round of meeting. So he had all the changes in the amendments in the law. Um, so I guess if you send it to me.
Okay.
Me attach the rest of the council. And then send it to me. I'll have to follow it down with Lee J. when I get a report, I'll hold it back. I'll probably back up to you. Maybe save a little bit of time.
I appreciate it.
Does that work for you?
Yeah.
Okay.
That works. The whole council, is anybody?
Good.
Okay.
Aye.
That's all good across the board? Yeah.
Yes.
Alright, Madam Chair.
Okay. Um, alright, that wraps up. And anything else for L D two thousand three? Got a workshop scheduled and then afterward, we might have changes. If we go back to the planning board, if we don't have changes, that will be the scheduled public hearing. Okay. Uh, alright, next word of business is town editor's report. I was at the department meeting yesterday. I've heard all of this. Please start. I usually keep that.
We're no longer gonna allow Mallory to sit at the head of the table. And I, keep going with your report. Uh, Highway finished being a cleanup, decided cleaning up from Friday's lawn. Backing Bloodline Street, the top floor pavement's done. Um, next up's gonna be to finish the lawns. Roadside mowing and ditching various plots. The old salt shed was taken down today. Um, currently request the. Property impacted the insurance, MMA insurance. They refused. They said they'll no longer cover it. Care down, who's on sale. Um, Red Bond will be taken down on October second. Katara, the.
Baloo.
Baloo, who's our tax person, has given her notice. She'll be done the end of September. Um, unfortunately, uh, she has a young family and with all the requirements of the job. Um, it turned out that she determined it wasn't worth it because of daycare. And she said, it's just cheaper for me to stay home and take care of the kids than take five hundred dollars with daycare. But a lot of it, getting ahead on it. So we accept it early in the nation with the grant. She's done a good job this summer. We wish her well and we post that position. Police Department has had seven or two accidents, a U one traffic stop. They're gonna do a make voyage foundation part two for the ten-year-old boy. Um, who they helped on nine fourteen. A surfer's gonna be reading them. Following his windows, I ninety-five, where the family would be headed to the airport to take them to distance. We're gonna give an escort to the ninety-five area. Home command triathlon event went well. They returned fourteen officers through the day from surrounding towns to help out. Uh, and a new temporary full-time officer shot for the week. By the time at twenty-seven, you call here today, you know, up to three hundred and seventy. Uh, training in the red barn will be completed before, by the end of October, before October. Uh, preparing for annual fire prevention week in October along with open outlet of that month. And a company called Lakewood Fire Office will be visiting the station Friday to survey the backdrop. And they give us a proposal on either refurbishing the. Tank cradle for the whole backend, depending on how they, what they look at and consider. Boat enforcement, they issued four building permits with one pending. They've done twenty-six inspections, had a lot of meetings. And issued force certificate of occupancy. Planning, they worked on the I one, I two zone merger. Uh, one project is still on the third quarter review, and the L D two thousand three one inch change completed waiting approval.
At the library, we have one of the solar inverters, uh, that went bad, but it's still, uh, uncovered under warranty. So that will be taken care of or just waiting on, on the court for the labor force portion of that. Uh, Lee's library reports that there's been a lot of things being left on the library porch. Stuff residents are looking to donate books or other items. They need to bring them inside, inside for staff to look at. Um, they cannot be left on the porch. And just, uh, we will note books can be brought to the general station from the side. Recreation, last week kicked off a great first week starter. They have twenty-two teams, thirty-nine volunteer coaches. And their first game will be on the sixth game. Uh, she ordered fourteen new benches that will be added to the fields. Uh, Highway helped put that together today and will be putting that out on field tomorrow. Youth and adult programs continue to be built. A new mindful-based stress reduction program will be added this fall. The community center has high volume of parental requests, so they're gonna be coming in. Years on the seventh enjoyed the Chelmsford River cruise in Boston. On the thirteenth, they are gonna have a stop and pop function. Assessing, um, work, putting on all evaluation reports are now online. It is on our website. Uh, it's on the assembly page on our website. It's been in the newsletter. It's been on Facebook. Um, there's also the beauty document that explains how to read the report. So all that stuff there goes to the public. Vernon has also started the twenty twenty-three municipal evaluation report that needs to be sent to the state by November first. This is an extensive ten-page reconciliation of the tax rate calculation for. Uh, with all the assessing data, including all the exemptions. She has also started the tree broister from the main forest service for all the lands. The tree brook is reported annually during October. And she has also started the annual sales return to the state where the sales value is commacious from July first, twenty twenty-two. She's doing very good twenty twenty-three, are reporting to the state for the next year's third primary year. The town clerk's office has issued twenty-two hundred transfer station figure. The November ballots have been ordered. There are two people going for town council and one person from school board, all encumbered. Business office, uh, was out today. We were gonna ask her for some training. Transfer station, um, is, is becoming more steady. It calmed down. Stickers are generally working. So they're seeing that, which is great. We are also reviewing transfer station buildings to make sure the prices in the town are reasonable and comparable with the surrounding communities. Economic development, Jean is working with N T B and the owners of Coffee Valley to assist their development and downtown business lines. And also wrapping up the comprehensive plan and inventory. Finally, S H R, they be defending. Uh, I, in the last couple of weeks, I've had eight business meetings and fifteen staff meetings. Uh, one of those I met with Jean, still in the planning and development commission, M D O T, when permanent transportation on the traffic improvement that Tim talked about earlier. Still working on that final elevator quote. Um, we talked about that during our workshop. Ema, uh, Jay and I have been meeting with them. That is, uh, taking quite a bit of our time. It is what invoices, payments, payroll, all the body documents. So we're looking at being reimbursed for about a hundred thousand dollars. The reimbursement straight down, seventy-five percent from FEMA, fifteen percent from EMA, and then ten percent space of the town property. I am getting really close to my audit. I'm down to only days left. They will be here in the last week of September. So I'm finalizing, analyzing, and doing a lot of that. The lady project, um, has been approved from efficiency meeting, and they actually started up the library today. And then they'll be giving the community center to call. And also Firefly Media was here and scanned the town hall on Friday. He was here most of the day. I was here with them. We propped everything over. I remember might even moved it, uh, might even called him. Uh, and I actually have a quick. Little video to show you, just to give you the preliminary of what it looks like now. There's gonna be a lot more detail added to it, but I wanted to give you this. There's like a whole building, and we start here in this room. And you can see each one of these little circles. You can click on, and that's where each one of his. Little, um, videos spin. And he had, I believe, over a hundred just on this floor. And you can spin it like that and see the ceiling. You can spin it like that and see the floor. And then you can head down the stairs.
You're going to circus?
Go a little farther. But you can see, it really does show you everything. And you can go through. Yeah. You have the ceiling. And he will be coming back. He had hoped to come back yesterday, but unfortunately due to the weather, that didn't work. Um. So he'll be coming back as soon as he can, wear the drone. He's gonna be doing the roof line. The whole roof and around the exterior part of the building, the high parts where we can't see easily from the ground. So also be taking some pictures, um, on the outside of the building closer to the ground. It's putting a little package together so people can get this virtual floor. At their convenience, um, at their home.
It's already money well spent just seeing that.
Yeah, it's, it's really the details.
Yeah, I'll be labeling, I'll label the label. It'll be labeling like these rooms, what size of room we going into. And when you get into the room, like behind you, you see the water staying in the bowl.
For all these wires that are exposed to the ceiling, that paragon can conduit or anything like that.
I like those that they can't miss in the screw. That's fantastic.
So all that stuff will be identified, tell you the room that's in, so, but again, the beauty behind this is. Anybody at any time can go in, look at this, pull it up and see it.
And these stairs are not eighty-eight componentized, you know, spacing on the railings. Um, there's a lot of different things that are not such a code. And so this is just a sneak preview. We can bring a few of other things with this. Just for the public and those watching on screen on Zoom, what Jen is sharing. Eventually we'll have a link to this. Poked it on the town website under the town hall project page that, um, the public can understand kind of. What we're working with as, as the part of this project and whenever we. And we hope to have that up at the end of October. You guys have anything else? Tim has someone to give away.
Yeah, the administration, here is the website. Movement analytics. Uh, town hall projects page has had one hundred and seven reviews, seventy-one years in the last twenty-eight days. Uh. Town's Facebook link, quick link has been added to the website. Uh, for myself, I attend business meetings, twenty-eight staff meetings, and still meetings with public. Uh, downtown, I've been working on the downtown visualization plan proposal discussion with the knees. Uh, did the safety meeting, they resumed. Leadership training is beginning at the end of the month for all the department heads. Yeah, and it will be about four months, uh, sorry, about four weeks long. At the end of it, it'll conclude with an hour training by Matt Terrace Savage on legal responsibilities to the patent heads and the police and social. Um. Also. Pictures can be taken on nine twenty-sixth, oh, nine twenty-sixth. John, please be cool.
I might go to town that day. I'll stand in stock.
One last thing. Well, the state has called us and, and asked us to. Generally, right now, the agreement that we had for maintaining the road was to the police station. The, in order for us to turn the bus around, we decided we're gonna head it out into New Light and Ninety-One. It's gonna make, turn around. It's safe to use it with the model. Jay made, called us and said. We are interested in getting you to go all the way down to the next light on one-on-one and take that over. Jay went out and says, it's two point one miles one way, four, four, four point two mile. Um. They, Jay talked to the state. The state said, it's simply, all we're looking for is winter. We, we're not gonna give you many. We're not doing some of agents on that. That'll still be fine. They just. Just follow and assault it, and say, I gotta take care of that. So I had a long discussion with Jay about that today, and I said, how many throws and cons? The cons is, there's not many, we're going to be out there, they said, the throws out, we'll make it a lot safer, we can do that turnaround and from out to out, state doesn't want thirty six. Um, Jay said, the truck's going to be out there, we're already going to truck, we're, the driver's going to be out there anyway. They have offered to pay us the full rate, even though, and we winter made it, they'll lose us another sixteen thousand. Four hundred dollars, without a doubt, we'll lose about four thousand dollars, based on thought and thought. Um, it's really an operation thing, but I wanted to get kind of your thoughts on that, your opinion, I guess, really my decision, but the issue. The, the, I don't mind doing it, if we can do it without distracting the rest of the other side of the work. The other part is the state's office that, um, we can go get some of their salt and use some of their salt for that. Especially if we run short, as the salt jetting north of the road. Um, which that would be a, Jay, for that to be you tell to him, if we run short, we can't get a delivery, that was a real possibility that happened last year. We had to beg and plead to get salt somewhere out, and the state said, no, 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 we'll work with you. And the other thing is, you know, they'll give us full, full rate, only make winter agents. Um, and last of all, at least, you know, over the years, for whatever reason, I'm in a great working relationship with the state. We're talking about a partnership right now for the two, for our main street project. I don't, I don't have any, Jay didn't have, I said, can we do it with the state's little company? They said, yeah, we make it safe for the residents, it's going to be a better road for us. Well, I don't have any issues, but I want to find your thoughts.
Straight stretch, truck on the road anyway, while cheering around. Honestly, it's a straight stretch all the way down.
Absolutely, Jay, I think it's a great road, so.
Great car.
I drive it every morning, and it's a nightmare, going through that hollow after you hit five five. So we're plowing, and it's going to be a lot better with the traffic in four thirty on that road. I guess, to me, makes, it takes perfect sense, especially with the caveat of we run low on salt, and we tend to truck in against all. That helps us, I'm good with handling that. Thank you.
Seems to me like a, um. Win-win in a way, I mean, we have to do a little bit of hard work, but it's my perfect, salt shed is a big win, it makes the road more safe for our community. Done.
I'm still disdretful of what they put on our plates, um, with making us take over the road in the first place. And I understand it's a straight stretch, um, I do this line of work, um. My only concern is, uh, the comment that you just made, Tim, is that the state only comes through one every six, once every six hours, and we could be more on top of that. But if we're going to be more on top of that, are the backcountry roads that get left to the last to be done, you're going to be waiting every lo, even longer. Because this main road is going to be now more of a priority.
No, so the problems are all divided up equally, and that's why we had to get a new truck. So what we did is, so that we wouldn't affect the back roads, all those large states act the same, they're, they're, it was the same. So that's why we had to get a new downtown truck, so that we could take that big pile truck and put it on two thirty six, do a two hour turnaround, without affecting all the other roads. So it ain't going to affect the others.
So we're just adding to one route?
Right, we're adding that route, and we're taking the truck that was down, well, actually, we're not, we're taking, the truck was, uh, yeah. So we're taking the big truck, putting it out there, and Eric's going to take that, Carrie's going to take a new small one, and she's going to follow the downtown, well, which was Eric's. Well, Eric got that route, Carrie's picking up Eric's route with a new five zero, that's why I did.
I mean, I guess since they're throwing in free salt possibly, it's not a favorite.
Um, as long as we don't have to maintain the bridge.
No, it's just, and, and so I had a citizen calling, talking to me about that, the road. And they made a statement, we own it, we don't own it, state still owns it. The agents that we're talking about are white agents, filling potholes, doing that stuff, cutting with grass alongside of the road, striping that stuff, they'll, they'll strip it then. Basic stuff, we're not talking about road repaving or any of that stuff, they own it, we don't own it. I made it very clear, we don't own it, we, we're just pure white agents and following and maintaining, that's all we're doing.
We're providing labor for a living, that's all we're doing.
That's exactly right. That's all I have.
Just reminded me, I think it's, um, I appreciate, well, this is, that's where I, my thought was, it's something I'm going to get pushed aside on the back. So I appreciate your answer there, and I think it makes sense, I, I have so much confidence in our group already. If I, I hear people talk about kind of being from Sanford and stuff, and I'm like, oh, grateful, I at least have South Bird to go for a minute, you know? Because it's so good, you know, it just makes sense to me with Pumpkin Town, where we're trying to develop that further, having been filing and new drivers, kind of a high school, just to make about a lot of size. As well as, um, helping that relationship with, with the state, because then you get to it right now.
I just want to hear your thoughts, thank you very much. That's all I have, Adam, Jim.
Great, thank you both, um, next is Alvin or comments, bye.
I have a few. Yeah.
Um, so I wish I'd said it, when Jay was here, um, public works proved a fantastic job, we're showing that nobody knew about, no protecting. Uh, they hit the roads full fort, even while the winter's on, uh, even out back, they were out cleaning trees down the road. Uh, amazing, they were out again, weekend and on Monday, to get a fantastic job in my South Bird. Uh, I know the police were busy because I saw them all, without dragging her out, and fire was out, continually throughout that day for that quick storm. Um, the fielder moment was Rachel Martin and the buckman, they did have to cut short, try out a lawn a little bit on the bike group, but Friday night. That place got devastated, the light was out, help was set up, storm rolled in, they lost a whole bunch of pop offs. Uh, they lost one of the big Marshall Pence, she came home, we went up half an hour from the stone stall, light is out. There was thirty or forty people already out there helping her, they reached out, the community asked for help, and there was people standing there, Marshall was there to pull me up, and set up a tent. But, uh, it was amazing to see the community pulled together and just clean it up and get it done for everybody that came in, so. Huge, great star for South Bird, if you get my down on the field. And thank you, Tim, for shutting my alarm off in my truck, for like, for sitting on my keys, that's all I think. All right, good night.
Uh, done.
Nothing today, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I got nothing.
I have nothing too.
Adam, Jim, I'm here.
That is all those favor, I, I, because, because you have to back here.
Okay.